Okay, this is the meeting of the Planning Committee on May 27th at 9:30. Can we get a roll call, please?
Good morning, Director Diana Mayer.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chair Ranjeet Kush.
Here.
And Chair Larry Russell.
Here.
Out is Director Jed Smith.
Okay, can you get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Director Mayer. It's adoption of the agenda.
Yes.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye.
And Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Public comment on non-agenda items.
There are none.
Okay. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the April 22nd meeting.
So moved, second.
Roll call.
Director Mayer.
Aye.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Kush.
Aye.
Chair Russell.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, item B, on-call environmental compliance and regulatory permit services.
Good morning, Chair Russell, Board members. Engineering Director Alex and I here this morning with me is Brian Verba, our Assistant Engineer, who's going to be presenting this item for the on-call environmental services, which is similar to the other services we have for compaction testing and construction and geotechnical and foundation work for design. So with that, I will pass it over to Brian.
Good morning. Good morning, Directors. As Alex had mentioned, my name is Brian Verba, Engineer in Planning. In alignment with the district's five-year strategic plan, the district is leveraging consulting firms to support environmental compliance for various routine district infrastructure and watershed projects, similar to our geotechnical on-call and design and planning contracts. In the spring of 2025, the district issued a request for proposal to five San Francisco Bay Area firms that were identified as having sufficient in-house expertise to address all of the components of the district's environmental services scope of work. District staff established a review committee and evaluated the proposals, followed by conducting interviews with all five consulting firms during the week of May 5th, 2025. Following the interview process, staff identified that both ESA and Panorama had a comprehensive understanding of the work the district was seeking and provided experienced teams to meet those needs. Each proposed contract will be for a not-to-exceed amount of $250,000 for a total authorized amount of $500,000 for both contracts over the next three years. Staff recommend the board to review and comment on this item for proposed future contract award. Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you for the update on that. Do we have an idea of where a majority of this money would go to in terms of big projects?
This, historically, we have an on-call environmental services contract right now, and the watershed uses some of that money, and then some of it's also used for our capital projects, for any CIP brought to like a pump station or tanks. So it's going to be about a 50-50 split between the watershed and capital projects as we move forward.
And when you say capital projects, you're talking about smaller projects? You're actually talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Talking like smaller pump station rehabilitations that may have some kind of environmental need. We're not talking the bigger projects like the Pine Mountain tunnels or anything like that. These are for the smaller, more routine businesses that we do.
Great, thank you.
So these are things like negative deck?
Yes, correct.
We did this before in the district, and I pushed and pushed and pushed to bring it back in-house. And now we're going back outside for the same things. I mean, negative deck, frankly, we could fill it out while we're sitting here during the meeting. You know, it's not a very complicated task, and I'm wondering why we aren't doing it in-house.
We are, that's a great question, Chair Russell. We are doing that for like our standard pipeline projects and pump station projects, but sometimes we do come across those that do require a little bit more work than just a standard categorical exemption that requires that environmental expertise to help us out.
Gotcha.
So, yes.
Okay, that makes sense. Public comment?
There are none.
Okay. And we get a motion to refer it to the board?
It's just review and comment.
Yeah.
So we can move on to the next item.
Okay. See, capital item, program, Bridgeway Pipeline Replacement Project. All right. Chairs.
Still here. So now I have our engineer, Hagar Nagash, who's going to be introducing this project. And this is one of those projects, it's not a big pipeline project, but it has had some major main breaks in the past couple of years with costly impacts to the district. So that's where we're addressing this project here today. And I will let Hagar go ahead and take it forward.
Okay, good morning, Directors. I am Hagar Nagash, Assistant Engineer in Design. This morning, I'm here to present the Bridgeway Pipeline Replacement Project. This project is located along Bridgeway Avenue within the city of Sausalito. This project will install approximately 870 feet of 12-inch, 8-inch, and 6-inch pipes, along with all the appurtenances to replace the old and leak-prone piping installed as early as 1943 as part of the district's capital improvement program. This section of pipe has experienced two main breaks, which have resulted in costly claims to the district. Removing this section of old pipe will improve system reliability and reduce risk of future main breaks and claims in this area.
Roughly, where is it? I didn't get a board packet, by the way, Terry, this month.
The cross street is Coloma.
Never showed up.
Bridgeway and Coloma.
Yeah, it's on the intersection of Bridgeway and Coloma.
Where's that? Reference it to Sushi Ram.
Oh, I don't know where Sushi Ram is.
How about the?
Sorry.
It's in the northern part of the city.
Over that, the other end.
Yeah. Yeah, wherever Sushi, on the other side of Sushi Ram, so, yeah.
Okay, well, that's on their side of the city.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. The engineer's estimate for this project is $475,000 and is scheduled to last 90 days with the completion date of September 15th, 2025. District will receive an open bid for this project on June 5th. If bid documents are acceptable, staff will make a recommendation at a future regularly scheduled board meeting for contract award. District staff recommends review and comment for this project, approval and contract award for this item at a future regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, I think at our last Planning Committee meeting, we spoke about the Park Road Pipeline Replacement Project. How does this compare in size to that one?
Park Road is a lot bigger than this one. Yeah, this is about 870 feet or so. But because of the history of the main breaks and the impacts and the costly claims, it did rise to the top to address sooner than later.
And that's, and I know that we also saw a risk analysis of our, all of our pipeline to help identify priority areas for replacement.
That is correct.
This obviously falls within the high risk. And then just, how are we doing with, you know, our targets for pipeline replacement this year? Are we on track to hit the target?
Yeah, we are definitely on track with our fire flow and our CIPs. We were just completing wrapping up Granada, Marin City. We're about to start putting out Marin City Phase 2 in the Canal District in the next couple of months, and as well as this, this project and the other ones that we got. So we're, we're right on track with our pipeline projects.
And those are still within budget, what we had allocated for?
Correct. And we're also, we recently awarded the Glenwood Fire Flow in San Rafael. So there's a lot of work that is coming up for the pipeline. And as a matter of fact, in the next couple of months, there will be an item brought back to the board for the purchase of steel pipe, because we're running out of pipe now.
And that was pipe that was?
That's utilized for, yes, previously ordered for our capital pipeline replacement projects.
Great, thank you.
Matt?
Good.
Okay. So if I understand where this project is, it's pretty narrow, the road. And we're going like down the middle or one lane?
It's crossed to, it's closer to the edge of pavement, actually. We don't, we're not going in the middle, yeah.
But, I mean, we'll block the lane.
We will definitely block a lane, yes, that's correct.
And because that is, if, which I'm thinking about, it's two-lane.
Yeah, it is a two-lane road.
So obviously, we're going to need to smooth some waves there.
There will definitely be some traffic control coordination. Given that it's a smaller segment of pipeline, it shouldn't take that long, but still, it's an impact to the public nonetheless, so.
Sure.
We'll make sure we do a good job with that.
Thanks. Public comment?
There are none.
Thank you. Okay. Item D, Nacasio spillway modification. Hi, Alicia.
Okay, we'll be providing an update to the board on the proposed Nacasio spillway modification project, as well as some additional land surveying support work that we're going to need to do. So Alicia Irish will be presenting this item this morning.
Good morning, Directors. Good morning, everyone. I have a brief presentation to share with you all in support of this update. Right. Today, we're going to give an update on the spillway modification project. We'll be going over an overview of the proposed project, talking about the design status, where it lands in engineering right now, touching on the community engagement that we've been undertaking, and then doing a review of the environmental review and permitting. First, let's talk about why we're doing this project, why we're thinking about it. So this really came about due to a couple of main drivers. One is the changing climate conditions that we're experiencing. I mean, in the past, we've had a very steady amount of rain that's come at predictable times. And now we're seeing that storms are coming more intensely, closer together, or sometimes even not at all, and which we saw in 2021 when we experienced our historic drought, second only to the 1976-77 drought. In 2021, we became within months of running out of potable water to our customers. As a result of that drought, the district initiated its Strategic Water Supply Assessment in 2022, which culminated in the water supply roadmap. One of the components of the roadmap is to investigate local surface storage, thinking about new dams or dam raises, or specifically for this project, spillway modifications and spillway improvements. So this project is looking at a spillway modification or a spillway gate raise to the Nacasio reservoir at Seeger Dam. But there's also been spillway modifications being looked at at a couple of our other reservoirs as well. For this particular spillway modification, the district evaluated a couple of alternatives and quickly found that the inflatable rubber gate option was preferable. This gate would span the entire spillway length at 280 feet and be of a proposed height of 4.4 feet. This would potentially add about 3,700 acre feet to this reservoir, which would increase our overall water supply, which is just under 80,000 acre feet by about 5%. One of the main reasons that the inflatable gate was selected as our preferred alternative was for the ability and confidence to ensure the operational control, meaning that we can raise or lower the gate as needed. And this would really allow us to reduce upstream impacts, so in the event of a large storm, the gate would be lowered. So now Alex is going to touch upon the design status.
Thank you, Alicia. So, so to touch, earlier on, we were looking at all the different alternatives. One of the key first things we were looking at is, you know, the geotech of the dam, how it was originally constructed, the materials that were made up. And we did, we identified earlier on that there was a lack of some information on the original geotech report that required an additional stability or additional soil borings to determine the stability of the dam. We'll talk about that in the next slide coming up. In parallel with looking at all the different options for the stability and the geotech work, we also developed the 30% design plan, which included the basis of the design report, which identified how the dam would be modified, and the gate operations plan, which Alicia just touched on briefly. We are developing that 30% design package. We're looking to get out to the Division of Safety of Dams this week, and we're looking to have a meeting with DSOD here in June to talk about the 30% design and get feedback from them. So kind of back on the geotech exploration. So when we were evaluating the geotech report, we identified that the Zone 2, as you can see on this cutaway right here, didn't have any real information on the soil characteristics, which is necessary to identify the stability of the dam, given the raise of the, of the gate that we're planning on doing, and see how the dam would react to that additional loading. So we identified that additional soil borings would be needed at some of these strategic locations to identify and classify that soil material, and also just to verify some of the other areas as well.
Which one is Zone 2? I see Zone 1.
Zone 1, if you look right to the right of it, Zone 2.
Way out to the toe.
Yeah, it's not the farthest.
So, see where's?
Yeah, I don't know, you can do it. Right here.
Yeah, yeah, right there. So that's Zone 2. So the first zone is actually comprised of like a high-plastic clay material, which is impermeable, and then it kind of varies as it goes out. So that second zone of the dam is actually fairly large, and we need to be able to identify what that material is made out of.
Is that on both the upstream and downstream side then?
Correct, it has that on both sides. So as you build out the dam, you build up the mass, that's what holds back the water, and we just got to make sure that any additional raise will not compromise the structural integrity of the dam. So staff filled out an application with Division of Safety of Dams and submitted that to them last month, and it's currently under review. And once they authorize our drilling plan, then we'll be able to proceed with our consultant team to do the soil borings into these locations, so we could get that classification.
Just on the process piece with the dam safety folks, when we submit our 30% drawing, what are we looking to get back from them?
Preliminary feedback on the design, how, what our approach looks like, and we incorporate that feedback into the 50% design package. So it's always, it's iterative process with DSOD, so that way, we don't get to 100%, and then all, they're, they're looking at this for the first time. So it's, it's constant communication with DSOD.
Great, no, it's good to hear. And then the information we're gaining from these additional bores, that's okay not to have it going to the 30% design?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
But this, this will go into, feed into the final design.
So Alex, maybe just building on Matt's questions. There's, there's a lot of background work that we need to do, or a lot of background information that we need to collect in order to understand if this is a feasible project, including the analysis that DSOD will do in order to give their opinion on the project. So, so I just want to confirm that these are all the steps that we have to take before decisions will be made as to whether or not we can move forward with this project. And I think we'll be talking about some of the other analysis that we need to do in order to understand, you know, all of the factors that are needed in order to make a decision.
That is correct, Chair Kush. It's, this is just a component that is needed for them to do their evaluation to make sure the stability is not compromised. And, and that would be the same for any alternative we'd have chosen. So it's, it needs to happen. So this next phase, kind of during the development of the 30% design and identifying impacts, we identified that we needed to do additional surveys, especially around the town of Nacasio, more localized in that area. So there's about 18 parcels around that area that require more in-depth survey to identify where the boundaries are. So that's going to involve doing fee title reports on the properties, looking at the county recorder's office and historical records to do a boundary retracement around that segment of Nacasio Creek, so we could identify where the monuments are and stake them out, so we could visually see where they are. And that information is going to be very critical in identifying what those impacts are going to look like once we start having those continued conversations with the landowners. In addition, this survey monumentation and benchmarking we're doing for, for this work is also going to feed into the hydrological analysis that's going to allow us to really understand what those upstream reaches of Nacasio and Halit Creeks and how those feed into the reservoir. Because right now, we don't have any survey monumentation out there, and we need to be able to tie that back from the back end all the way to the front end where the spillway is, so we could, we know what those elevations are, and they make sure that they match. So it's very important that we do this work.
And I appreciate this additional step. Where I get frustrated is that for over $200,000, the county doesn't have this information on record?
There are historical records, but the thing is, like the monument itself, it could be an iron pipe or a concrete monument. It's been out there since the 60s, and it's probably.
It's gone.
It's exactly, it could be gone, it could be silted over, but they need to be found. And until you find them, it's, you know, these are just kind of lines on paper, so they have to be established on the ground.
No, I agree, and I think this money is definitely worth it. I just, you know, part of, this is going to benefit the county as well, having this information too.
Yeah.
Just frustrating, we're doing their job to some extent. Matt, we just, we just, I tried to find out what the boundary lines are for our house. Impossible. None of that information exists. Everything has moved around since the area was developed in '47, and a lot of the, those monuments are gone now. So, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate.
Yeah, the county will tell you, go hire a survey to reestablish that monumentation, and that's exactly what we're doing here. So we received quotes in the amount of $228,929, and we'll be bringing this item at a future board meeting for award of this professional services agreement.
So now moving on to community engagement. One of the things that we've been working hard at for this project in its initial stages is our commitment to early engagement, not just with this group here, you as directors, but also everyone that might be interested in this project. So this slide here shows all of the meetings that we've had with the various interested parties, not just the regulatory agencies, but also the Lagunitas Technical Advisory Committee, the Nacasio Landowners Association, as well as the Nacasio School Board. These are just the formal meetings that we've presented information at, but this is in addition to the numerous informal meetings and conversations that I've had with property owners, resource agencies, and other parties. We've also had our first scoping meeting as part of the notice of preparation process that took place last Thursday evening. There was about 50 people in attendance, both in person and online. So people are interested, they are making comments, and we're moving through that process. One of the main concerns that's come up in our conversations is concerns about what's going on upstream of the reservoir and the fact that there are some data gaps in understanding the existing localized conditions there and how the effects of the proposed project, due to the increased water surface elevation, may have effects on roads, on utilities such as wells and septic systems, on the school, and on other, on properties that are in the community. The district is currently undergoing a detailed hydrological modeling of Nacasio and Halit Creeks, like Alex mentioned, to better understand these channel dynamics and these localized flooding, to really see what's going on now. And then the next question would be how the project may affect what's going on. So just a little bit more detail as to what we'll be doing. We'll be performing a stream condition assessment, which involves a topographic survey, sediment sampling and transport, numerous cross-sections of the creek from the, where the, where the reservoir ends closer to the town, all the way up to where Nacasio Creek meets Lucas Valley Road. So quite, quite a long stretch there. And also on Halit Creek, as it passes the cheese factory and, and more upstream. There'll be sediment sampling, we'll be developing a sediment transport model alongside of the hydrologic model, and really noting the channel condition and what's going on. In addition, we're installing stream gauges on these upstream tributaries. These are the two main tributaries that feed into the reservoir in Nacasio and Halit Creeks. And this will allow us to have localized knowledge of what's going on in those two tributaries now. This hydrologic modeling and sediment transport analysis will look at both pre and post, post-proposed project conditions to really understand how the project will make a difference. There's also been some downstream concerns that have been identified. Oh, excuse me. Namely biological resources, the studies to be prepared, the study area and surveys. We're currently doing spawner surveys and have been since last fall. I think there are a couple of bullets got dropped here, but I'll speak to them. Snorkeling surveys, also looking at the lower portion of Lagunitas Creek after the dam and the stretch of Nacasio Creek meets the confluence of Nacasio Creek to see how the Lagunitas Creek may be affected. How do the fish respond to that environment? How do they utilize that ecosystem in the lower part of Lagunitas Creek? And then also looking at Nacasio Creek, which is the one mile of stretch between Seeger Dam and the confluence. How do the fish utilize that ecosystem? Are there other parts of wildlife or other pieces of wildlife that use that? Special plants, critical habitat? There's also freshwater shrimp, which is a listed species in this area. So really gathering a lot of information to understand, similar to upstream concerns, what's going on now and how would the project affect that area. Now to go into our environmental review and permitting. So as I mentioned, the district has published its notice of preparation. This was published on April 30th. And this really is the, what I like to think of as a kickoff to the environmental review process. You can see this in the figure in the dark blue on the slide. And so once the notice of preparation has been published, we initiate what's called the scoping process. When the notice of preparation was published, it was initially, the scoping period was for 35 days. About two weeks ago, the district extended that period to a total of about 95 days, so an additional 60 days, to really give and allow everybody to have a thorough understanding of the issues that are going on. And really try to get feedback and get as much information as we can as we move through this environmental process. You can see on the top there, there is a public review and comment period. I did mention that. The first scoping meeting took place last Thursday. There's a second scoping meeting this afternoon, which will be a virtual meeting. And then there will also be a third scoping meeting scheduled for July 15th. Once this scoping meeting, or the scoping period wraps up, or even before that, we'll be conducting all of these studies that we've been talking about, the surveys, the hydrology, the fishery studies, the other resource investigations. We'll also be continuing our outreach, not just with these formal scoping meetings, but all of the informal meetings as well. And we're really going to have this process, which is depicted in this blue arrow, drive the schedule for the resulting steps of the EIR process or the Environmental Impact Report. Once there is a very common understanding of all of these facts, then the draft EIR will be prepared. And there will be another public and comment review period for that with public meetings. And then after that, there will be the final EIR, responses to comments, and a certification process. Throughout this whole project, this project is still just a proposed project. In order for the board to consider the proposed project and approve the project, the EIR needs to be certified through the Board of Directors. And at that point, the board can consider this for approval. We really wanted to take away the timelines for this. It was important for us to make sure that the process was driving this and not the timelines for, for this project.
Alicia, before going too far, I do appreciate the, the additional scoping meeting, and then also to the extension of the public comment period. In terms of timing, I think this is important. We have a few really big studies going on right now. Will those wrap up and be made public? Or once we get through them and be able to publicly share them prior to the end of the, the public comment period that we're in right now?
We are, we are working our hardest. We will be having two crews out in the creek starting this Thursday to collect all of that on-the-ground data. And then we're aligning up our models to try to feed that information as quickly as possible. But we're also trying to balance that with, with a quality model, right? You don't want to rush it. So by the end of the scoping period, I don't have a definitive answer as to whether the model will be complete or not, but we will certainly have made good progress and be able to share what, how it's going and where we're at.
And I don't want to disrupt the process. I think getting it right is way more important than anything else. But looking at it in terms of aligning the public comment period, if we need to push that again, are we able to, based on timelines for studies, is that an option?
Yeah, so if I could, the, as Alicia noted, we're trying to be intentional and not have a perception that a schedule is driving this. We want the facts to drive it, and the process to drive the schedule. The, I, I do appreciate Alicia's reluctance to commit to your question, because these things do have a way of evolving in terms of more information. For example, maybe validation in the winner of the model will happen, but we wouldn't necessarily want to, you know, put a hard stop on this process pending, you know, everyone's full understanding and agreement of all the issues, because a lot of that will happen. Because a lot of that will happen through the EIR investigation process itself as well.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
I understand historically we have dredged that creek, but we haven't dredged it for a long time.
Yeah, this is another area where we are finding, I think it's fair to say, a lack of data, certainly to the extent we would want in terms of what prompted us to begin dredging, how often we did it. I think at this point, we're doing knowledge that we did do it and the county did do it. The activities in creeks over the decades have gotten far more complicated in terms of regulatory oversight. And that could have been an issue. So we really don't fully know. As we get into this, you'll you'll see that and as Alicia has talked about, our intent is to really understand the current conditions and then understand how this project may impact them. And we do think there's going to be a benefit to the community of this work we're doing. Because today there is a lack of understanding generally and which includes among the community of what really is causing these flooding issues that appear to have gotten worse over the years. So, you know, we're looking at this as a partnership with the community, full transparency as we go through this to collectively understand and kind of make collective decisions on how we proceed.
Do you happen to know how much elevation drop there is across that reach of the creek? Are we talking about ten feet or a hundred feet or?
I think with one foot. Once we get into doing the cross sectional surveys, we'll have a better understanding of what that elevation difference is.
Well, what's the lay of the land look like? I mean, is it steep or flat?
I think it's been changing over the years, so it's a lot flatter now than perhaps it used to be. We are hearing numerous anecdotes of the channel filling in with sediment, different types of sediment from different places.
And that have I.
We're really just trying to understand, you know, are there any bottlenecks or choke points? Is this, you know, how systemic is it? How localized is it? Could could mitigations be done to affect what's happening?
It's not a backwater curve though from the reservoir.
No, we're just trying, we're in the information collection stage right now.
Right, but the cause of the backup of the water isn't the reservoir, but the channel itself, as far as we can tell.
There's a big data gap, I think, is is the best way to put it.
Well, there's the reporter that one person saying that he had an eight foot wall of water come at them.
Right. And we've been, I've been going out to various properties and it's it's similar types of stories. And then we talk to people that are even further upstream and they have not the opposite issue, but they have a lot of erosion and a lot of scour and the water is moving very fast. And then you go to other properties further downstream, the water is much slower. There's a lot more vegetation, there's a lot more overgrowth. And the water acts very differently closer downstream. So why is that difference happening? What what is causing all of this? These are the types of questions that we're looking to to get some information on.
Thanks.
So as we go through these investigations, they they will eventually culminate in an EIR. This is just a brief overview of the outline of what that would look like. There's a very detailed project description, environmental settings, impacts, potential ways to reduce those through either alternatives or mitigation measures. And then after that, there's there's a number of regulatory permits that are needed, not just from the DSOD, which we'll need, we will need approval from for our engineering design, but then also fish and wildlife, both at the state and federal levels, the Army Corps of Engineers, the National Marine Fishery Service and so on. So we're really talking to nearly every agency that's around. Some of the next steps. So we're going to continue with our scoping meetings and other community engagement activities with the agencies, the Technical Advisory Committee, landowners and the school. There are two public scoping meetings on the twenty seventh and July fifteenth. We'll also be in parallel, working to submit our thirty percent design to DSOD, the Division of Safety of Dams, looking to complete our geotechnical investigation once we receive our alteration application back. We're also continuing with our environmental surveys, not just our fishery studies, but also any biological studies, wildlife, historical, archaeological, cultural, kind of the slew of like typical environmental surveys. And we were going to work to understand what's going on at a localized level, both upstream and downstream and any potential mitigations that could affect what's going on. We're also looking, not to forget for our important boundary survey work, for a review and comment for the survey contract award at a future regularly scheduled board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Christian.
Follow up on the survey component of that. One of the line items in the in the staff report talked about actually measuring out inundation contours throughout and marking them for that. And that is just with the dam raise currently.
Correct.
Are we able to to highlight those so that the community knows what those mean out there so they can actually see it? Is that include that as part of it? Or at least be able to say if you see this type of marker, this is what we're going for?
Right, they're going to be staked out with a piece of wooden lath and it'll probably be flagged some way to identify what that elevation means. So on top of not only identifying the the property boundary corners, there are also going to be these other additional layers for survey monumentation markers for elevations.
Excellent. And, you know, I very much appreciate all the additional time and putting into this to really understand what's going on. I think it's important just in general as a project. And I think the information we're going to get out of it, Ben, to your point, is going to be really a benefit for everybody too. You know, one of the things I wouldn't say concern, but question that we're getting right now is how can Marin Water understand the flow of these creeks if you're looking at it just during the summertime? And I know you guys do so much work, most of the stuff you don't let us know about because it's so deep in the weeds. But I'm assuming we're going to get a good understanding of flows all year long, not just a short snapshot in the driest part of the year to understand what's going on.
Yeah, and I think like Alicia mentioned, we are going to be installing installing stream gauges in the upper creeks to understand what those flows are year round. So once we start getting into those winter flows, we all understand what the inflow to the reservoir is. And we'll use all that information to understand what the impacts are.
Start getting more data over the winter too.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Alicia Alex, for really good updates. I I hope the the degree of effort that you're putting into understanding the potential impacts of the of the spillway rays, you know, are appreciated by everybody. And, you know, as as Ben and Matt have noted, illustrate that we really are trying to collect the most amount of data possible for a decision. I think in the end, those decisions will be made on a cost benefit analysis. At some point, the costs required to mitigate impacts of the spillway rays may not justify the the project going forward. Having the best data to understand that cost benefit analysis is going to be critical because we know that the decisions have to be defensible. I think we think about a lot in terms of defending decisions to go forward. But we'll be equally under pressure to defend the decisions not to go forward with this project from certainly my constituents, right? So understanding that, being able to defend whatever we end up deciding is obviously important for everyone. So do appreciate all the consideration being put into this.
I'm thinking we maybe should think about story polls or something to that effect while the surveyor is out there. In other words, if we're looking at inundation, I forget Martha's definition of inundation and flooding, there were two different terms she used. But to highlight that location and depth, kind of like a grade marker on an excavation, you know, something just say, you know, three feet here or two feet there or something like that. I mean, you got the surveyor there, it's fairly easy to at least, I assume we have got a feel for what the final surface elevation of the reservoir would be if we put the rubber dam in.
Yeah, I think we do know if we raise the water level of the reservoir, we can, we know where it will land in terms of the reservoir. What we're trying to reconcile is how that raise and and water surface elevation of the reservoir interacts with the conditions that are going on in the Cassio and Hallett Creeks. Because as you know, the Director Russell, people are seeing water levels rise by eight feet or more, sometimes on an annual basis. And do those markers that we would put in the ground, do they? Is it a complete picture? We want to make sure that anything that we're we're trying to refine these inundation maps showing the complete picture of not just the raise in water surface from the reservoir, but also how it interacts with the existing conditions.
Sure, Alicia, but the surveyor could set contour elevations markers, you know, like this is.
Yeah, yes.
I don't know what the surface of the reservoir is. It's like a thousand feet or something like that.
Uh, the the water, the the surface elevation is a hundred and sixty five feet.
One sixty five, so we could have one sixty five, one sixty six, one sixty seven, one sixty eight, just marked. So people will have a feel for where those land.
And I believe that's the intent of that contour survey, to identify where those inundation, this is the one seventy or this is the one sixty nine, just to kind of show where that's at.
I understand our value of it, but I'm thinking about for the public. In other words, if we were to leave a story poll or a marker to say, you know, with permission, of course, that this is the contour one sixty six, one sixty seven, one sixty eight, one sixty nine, whatever they are, you know, that would then help people see it, not just look at a map.
Yeah, so Chair Russell, the the dilemma to some extent, we certainly hear and appreciate what you're saying is that we're trying to be sensitive to the understanding we now have and we're increasing our understanding that when we showed the inundation maps, we showed traditional inundation maps of, well, the reservoir goes up this much, it'll inundate out here. And those maps were not consistent with folks' experience on the ground. So we do want to be careful of, we put these markers out, say, no, water is only going to get to here. The community looks at and says, you guys don't know what you're doing because we see water backing up all the way to here. So we need a way to tell that story of this is just a pure inundation, but this is the consequential flooding that could ensue from that.
Sure, but the concept of marking the contour is irrelevant to the final water surface elevation. In other words, it gives people the ability to see what one sixty six is, what one sixty seven is, what one sixty eight is, just somewhere. You know, I don't know that it needs to be marked on each lot, but when you got the surveyor out there, it's pretty easy to tie a ribbon on a fence or whatever it is, you know, or to set a marker.
Yes.
You know, I use the term story pool because, you know, at least in Tiburon, it's required, you've got to put them up before the house goes up so that people can see what ends up. Well, we're not quite ready for that, but I think marking the contours would be fairly straightforward. Maybe it can be on the ground, I don't know, but a way of marking them so that people can see it.
Yeah, they usually consist of putting in like a three foot wooden, you know, stake in the ground.
And but yeah, we. Like like a grade stake.
Yeah, exactly. So we could look into that for sure.
Yeah, it's just something simple, not to bog the surveyor down, you know, just two seconds and put the tag there and and set a nail or something and say that's the elevation or like you say, tie a ribbon on something, you know. But I do appreciate the situation. I was concerned about the article in the IJ this weekend. I presume you saw it, the op ed. We clearly need to coordinate. I know you are, but we need, I think, to do a little more coordination with that, the author of the article and that group that he heads. So anyway, give that some thought. As I said, I've been getting a little heat too from the sidelines. So, you know, we need to make sure that we're, this thing is running smoothly. I I thought that was quite interesting, the drawing you put up of the relationship of Nacascio to Kent. I actually hadn't realized that. So the water that we're capturing eventually would flow to Kent to be captured in Kent.
No, no, the the water that is coming from Nacascio that flows into Nacascio reservoir eventually goes to Timalis Bay. So it goes from.
Downstream then.
Goes downstream.
They're drawing the other way around.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So Kent Lake water flows into Lagunitas Creek flows down. And then a couple of miles downstream, it has a confluence with Nacascio Creek, which is the downstream creek from Seeger Dam.
It's gone.
And then both of those meet together and go towards Timalis Bay.
Yeah, in the future, could you put arrows on flow direction?
Sure.
Because when you show a flat map with no elevations, it's hard to know which way it's going.
No problem.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe, sorry, Dan, just one more question. Want some minor? Okay, I get confused when we talk about inundation versus flooding. I understand that the inundation that we estimated based on, you know, our analyses may not coincide with what people are experiencing, as Ben you just explained. But I I thought that the selection of the the rubber gate was to reduce, minimize any risk of flooding, you know, beyond what we would create through an additional inundation. I reckon it, we may not, we may may not be able to lower the gate in time in the case of very severe atmospheric rivers, but I'm not sure. I mean, are we really increasing flooding risks beyond the inundation that would be experienced due to the spillway race?
So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are two separate issues, inundation and flooding as you're describing. And what we're trying to understand is how those two aspects interact. So the flooding is going on now without any reservoir raise. And with this proposed project of raising the water surface elevation in the reservoir, there is a potential that it may interact with the existing flooding going on now and cause worse conditions.
Right.
And so that really needs to be understood before we do anything to cause that to be different. And then there's another component of, you know, when we're showing these figures of raising the water surface elevation, you know, we're showing, you know, these these values, one seventy or things like that. And folks are like, well, that's happening in my area now. So if you're adding more water theoretically, then what's happening now will will be changed or or be worse. And so that's where the data gaps in the in the information collecting is really going to help fill in those kind of missing puzzle pieces. But to your question, to your statement about lowering the gate, right now, the district's operation plan is to, at that new spillway height, before it has one foot of water above that new spillway height, the district would lower the lower the gate. So it wouldn't be that the district would only do it in a large atmospheric river. It's really going to be a combination of the water surface elevation that will be monitored on at least an hourly basis. And then also learning the rate of change of that water surface elevation and then taking into account what's going on with the climate, with the weather predictions. Having those upstream stream gauges will tell you what's going on with the hydrograph of those tributaries. So is there more water coming or are we on the tail end of that hydrograph? And those kinds of metrics will inform in a sort of a flow chart type of way when the district would lower the gate. So there's a number of factors that are going to interact that we need to be very clear and and have a collective understanding, not just at a staff level, but at a community level, how all of those aspects like work together.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, Alicia. I understand all the uncertainty right now on the amount of inundation slash flooding that will be exacerbated by the spillway rays, you know, the the existing issues. But again, my understanding is we are not through this exacerbating the impacts of, say, a hundred year flood.
That's correct. We're not, we're not doing that.
Yes.
That's correct.
Thanks.
My purpose in asking the question about the backwater curve is it's what I understood from the folks that have talked to me is that these flooding issues are occurring from the creek, not from the water. It's not backing up from the reservoir, it's can't get to the reservoir.
We're hearing similar things as well, but we want to ensure that while that may be the case now, if we raise the water level by four and a half to five and a half feet. be the case now, if we raise the water level by four and a half to five and a half feet, would that condition still be the same?
Sure, but I mean, if we're talking about an eight-foot wall of water, you, I guess it's conceptual, you could get a backwater curve from the current conditions of eight feet. It's seems unlikely to me. It's probably a pinch in the channel that's causing it.
Where, where is that pinch point? What, could anything be done? You know, what would that look like? How, what, what would that look like, I think is what we're trying to sort out.
Yeah, okay. I have another question too, but it's skipping me right now. What, what did you ask them about?
Inundation slash flooding that's currently occurring versus flooding that would occur in, say, a hundred-year storm event.
Yeah. Oh, I know, the rubber dam. I was quite surprised that you talked about lowering it, that we would do that as a proactive measure. The ones I'm familiar with collapse in the event of water overtopping them. That's one of the beauties of them, they're fail-safe. And so you don't actually need to do that, I don't believe?
Yeah, I think that the, the idea to lower it ahead of time is we don't want it to get to an elevation higher than where we want to operate it. So we start lowering it ahead of time. Because you're right, they will collapse if five feet of water go over the top, but that's more water than we're, that we want to actually impound. So we want to get ahead of that and actually lower it before that gets, it gets to that point.
And the other thing was, that picture, I think it went over the audience pretty easily, but it caught my attention, the one you showed of the dam being inundated. These are what it looked like to me. The spillway was running, but it looked like there was water going over the top.
Oh, the example picture of the inflatable gate?
Uh, no, you showed a picture of the dam, of the Seager Dam.
Oh.
It looked like water was going over the top to me. Maybe I misread the picture.
Water does go over the top of the dam in eight out of 10 years right now.
Meaning it exceeds the spillway?
Yeah, correct. Oh, yeah, sorry, I misspoke. Water does not go over the dam. Water goes over the spillway, excuse me.
Through the spillway, yeah, gotcha, okay. Yeah, because like I say, the picture I saw looked to me like water was going over the top.
Oh, yeah, no, water, in eight out of 10 years, we see water exceed the level of the spillway.
It's spill, yes, yeah, I got that. But it doesn't go over the top of the dam. So the spillway's working properly?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Paul, do you comment?
Yes, yes, we do. The first speaker is Ms. Martha Davis.
Thank you. Not clear on the concept. I think you've stolen most of my talking points today, so thank you.
That's good.
I think this is good, and I really appreciate the questions that you've been asking, the thoughtfulness of both the staff and your questions today about what needs to be investigated, how do we really understand what's going on out there? And ultimately, the whole goal here is to solve problems. And you've got our community right with you in wanting to solve problems. I think a couple of points that I wanted just to kind of highlight out of this. Number one, support for the funding for the staff on the land surveys, and certainly for the work that they are now doing on the detailed hydrologic and hydraulic studies and the sedimentation transport studies. Because we do agree that these are essential, not only to understanding the existing conditions, but then where do we go from here on the proposed project? I'm also a big fan of, of sharing information to support problem solving because I figure that's the fastest way to avoid conflict and save some time and money. And so one of the questions I have for you, I wanted to respectfully request, is the opportunity to get more detailed information on the, all the aspects of the hydrology and hydraulic studies that would be done. Our community is going to be very interested in that, and I think they'll have some good suggestions. I mean, if we had been consulted last July, the first thing we would have raised our hands on is said, will you put gauges in the stream just like you are in the lower Nacasio stretch? Because that's information that we all needed. We didn't have it either. So I just think that anything we can do to encourage getting people together that do have this knowledge and expertise with your consultants and staff, get the details so that we can help at least give you our best thinking on what else needs to be looked at. And because we have the lived experiences on the streams, we're going to know things that the consultants aren't going to know. The other thing I really want to touch on because it's so important, models are great, but they really don't tell you what you need to know unless you've done the validation, the calibration. So the questions related to what is sufficient data, how much time has to go into that, is really critical to having confidence in what the models are telling us and how we can use them appropriately to solve problems in the Nacasio area. So I, I appreciate staff's recognition. There are a lot of uncertainties right now and not knowing how much data that we're going to need to actually have confidence in these models. So the calibration, validation, it's the question we were going to ask of your consultants. Clearly, you're asking of it, of the staff right now, so we really appreciate that. So I thank you for this very thoughtful conversation. We look forward to working with you on the details of the studies and just moving forward to try and figure out what's going on out there and what's the best combination of actions.
Thanks, Ms. Davis.
That will take care of the problem.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
There are no further speakers.
And I will say too, that you guys have got the ear of the, the board and the staff. We, we hear you. And we're, we're going to do our, our best to solve all the issues.
No further speakers.
Good, thank you. Okay?
That's a bit of a change of pace.
A bit.
Good morning, Paul Selye, Water Resources.
Together though.
Yeah, arm in arm. Have I heard that before? Paul Selye, Water Resources Director, as Craig is pulling up the presentation, I just wanted to, you know, a little preamble maybe. The last several months, we've been sort of learning about AMI ourselves. You know, it's a, it's a segment of a market that's unto itself, and it's kind of burgeoning in the industry. So we've been spending a lot of time understanding that market, looking at the different technologies, even running, as you know, sort of mini pilots to try to validate the claims and usefulness of some of those technologies. And the process that we're following, just in general, big picture, is to kind of, to maximize the competitive competitiveness of the RFP process that we're, we're going to be embarking on in the next month or so. And so to that end, we want to keep as many of our options open. So kind of unlike some of the other processes that we've gone through on water supply where you sort of see this narrowing of alternatives, we're actually holding off on doing any of that narrowing until post-RFP. So once the RFP is issued and we get those results coming in, we'll actually have the sort of facts on the ground. Importantly, pricing, for example, on, on different options and approaches. So there are a lot of decisions that we're going to be taking a look at once the RFP comes in. And our goal in the next few presentations is really to start looking at some of those key considerations and sharing what we've learned from the industry in the last several months or so with you, so that as we get into that decision-making process, you guys are armed with the information and, and necessary to kind of understand the implications of those decisions and those, how they narrow our choices. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Craig, and he will take us through sort of a quick update today on AMI.
Sorry, before Craig starts, just, just to repeat back what I think you said, because I think it's interesting, right? The, the pilots that you're conducting now, you're, you're saying they're not so much to identify the preferred solution at the moment. It's, they are more to identify the features that are going to be of greatest interest to us, or the characteristics that we are going to prioritize, and those will be emphasized in the RFP.
And whether those characteristics or features work for us. Physically, in our meter boxes, just all, there's just a variety, this is a project that goes from the very simple, you know, spatial analysis in a meter box, does something fit in the right lay length, the right sizes, the right height, the right geometry in a meter box, to, you know, sort of complex software that people have developed so that customers can interface with their, with their water in a way that they currently don't.
Right, because there is this risk that we ask for things in the RFP that ultimately we can't implement because they don't align with our system, with our existing infrastructure.
Well, hopefully, we wouldn't do that. I mean, that's what engineering's about, is you make those decisions before.
But, but I think the pilots are helping us make those decisions.
Well, the pilots, it's kind of complicated here because you really need to talk about the big picture of pilots. There's the Tiburon pilot with the 5,000 meters, which is a little different animal, and it, it kind of feeds into this question because, um, previously, my recollection, this has been going on for years, I mean, at least 10 years, if not more. I remember having a dinner at the AWA meeting in San Diego, which has to be at least a dozen years ago, with the MWD staff, talking about exactly this issue of AMI. At that time, the plan was to maintain the Census Connection, S E N S U S, it's a company that mounts onto our existing meters so we don't have to modify the meters. Are we now thinking about replacing all the meters?
I'd like Craig to answer that one.
Okay.
Right, um, there is a, a percentage of meters, about 10 to 15% that are, that are census meters that are well within their useful life, and they could be fairly easily retrofitted, and it wouldn't force us into a census AMI system because it would have a, a connection on it that could go to various different vendors. So we wouldn't be stuck with census.
So your thinking is that we'd have a hybrid then, potentially?
A, a hybrid of equipment in the ground might not be the same vendor as the main AMI system. Yeah. And part of that is, is cost to get the useful life out of, out of this equipment.
Sure, sure. Although I do remember a statistic from the AMI vendors, which was that the bulk of the cost savings has to do with the replacement of the meter and the resetting of the error band on the meter. At least I remember that was the previous argument. In other words, meters, my understanding, meters come out, although you guys have corrected me on this, at like 105% of the reading, 105?
Right, AWA requires that meters can't even be shipped unless they're within one and a half percent of 100%. So 98.5 to 101.5. And then from there, they can lose accuracy.
Right, but my understanding is they come out set at 101.5.
Uh, well, each meter actually has a low, medium, and high flow rate right on it, almost like a born-on date on the meter. All of these are factory tested. And I see the, across the spectrum, sometimes they're 99, sometimes they're 101. So it, it does vary, but they, they just can't ship them if they're outside of that window. And we'd only be looking at, as far as the retrofits, keeping some of those census meters, we'd only be looking at meters that are, say, less than 10 years old or less than a certain amount of mileage, so they're still under warranty, and our bench tests have shown that they are still performing around that, you know, 98, 99%.
My knowledge of this issue is fairly complete at this point in time and growing. It's my understanding from the industry that the trend right now is to go to electronic flow meters instead of mechanical.
Or ultrasonic or like a non-moving part meter?
Well, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. Non-moving parts.
Right.
And non-wearing parts. So that needs to play into this too, because, you know, that meter, the positive displacement meter we currently have basically has a decay over time.
It's funny you should mention it. We have a slide on that for you to elucidate some of this.
Sorry to be ahead of the presentation.
No, no, this is a great discussion, but Craig's got some great information to share with you guys.
Thank you. Okay, so this presentation will cover three different approaches to implementation, some key considerations, review of other criteria, and then finish with next steps. So the three different approaches to im- to implementation we're considering is turnkey, in which the AMI vendor is the prime contractor, and they submit a complete solution that includes the design, equipment, and they even subcontract out the installation. So you're basically dealing with the AMI vendor for the whole package. Then there's what we're calling traditional installation, which would have separate contracts, one between Marin Water and the AMI vendor, and a separate one between Marin Water and the installation contractor. And that would be more typical to Marin projects where, where working directly with the, with the installation contractor.
Are we taking it to the next step of looking at financing?
So within the AMI vendors, there, I haven't found any financing options. They all say, oh, we have this connection with a bank, but there's no, I haven't come across any, any financing directly with the AMI vendors. And then the third one, district-installed approach, this would be where Marin Water has a contract with an AMI vendor, and then you, and hires additional in-house staff to install the meters, lids, and endpoints. If there, if it was an antenna AMI system, we'd work with a contractor on the antennas. But this would be modeled after the 5500 that we have in the ground that we're all done with in-house staff. So the RFP will kind of facilitate all three scenarios so that the proposals can address, you know, costs for these different approaches.
And I know when mine was put in, it's pretty seamless when the district does it. I, I didn't even know it was done until I saw the antenna.
Right, yeah, especially for retrofits, there's not even interruption of water service.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it can go fairly smooth. And Marin Water replaces thousands of meters a year just as part of the meter change program. So it would basically be an acceleration of that. So the next few slides will talk about antenna and cellular systems. So just to kind of introduce the, the systems here, the antenna systems rely on a fixed network of antenna that's typically installed on Marin Water assets like tank sites or pump stations. Cellular uses the existing cellular infrastructure in Marin, so that wouldn't change our footprint because all work would be done at each meter location, and cellular is what we're piloting currently with the 5500. And then the third one there, hybrid.
What do you mean by footprint?
Uh, that, so installing antennas would, would affect the footprint of our infrastructure where.
You're talking about our ability by using the word footprint? I mean, because there's no, nothing changes, it's electronic, right?
You have to find new sites.
Compared to an antenna, you have a, you know, a vertical asset with an antenna that's obvious in a physical change to the environment with cellular, it's just, as you say.
But there's no local change.
Yeah.
There's nothing, you know, you know, the footprint doesn't change in terms of the user.
Unless the antenna's in front of your house.
Yeah, well, that's true.
Like a silhouette, a change potentially with antennas, yeah. And then the hybrid systems are predominantly antenna and then fill in with cellular. So some vendors offer that. So a couple of slides on antenna systems. This is actually a photo taken from one of our tanks, and you can see some antenna equipment installed on the tank railing. And Marin Water has an existing network of antennas, primarily for SCADA. So we're used to antennas and maintaining them. An AMI antenna system would require the installation of new antenna infrastructure, and this would need power, battery backup, and periodic maintenance. And testing would need to be involved to make sure there's no interference with existing frequencies, because our SCADA system works in a certain band of megahertz, and that overlaps with some of the AMI vendors' antenna systems. Another slide on antennas. Propagation studies have shown a range of anywhere from 14 to 59 antenna being required to, to communicate with the majority of our meters. And per vendor, they're very specific in how many they need, but you can see it's a pretty dramatic range, 14 to 59, across various propagation studies. And that these could range from, anywhere from 10 to 85 feet tall. So you can imagine, most of our tanks are in a 20 to 30-foot height range, and if you take a 30-foot tank and add 50 feet, 55 feet on top of that, that's, you know, the silhouette of a 85-foot tower. And quite a few of our tanks are in close proximity to, to, you know, residential properties or neighboring properties.
So it's all line of sight, the transmission?
Yeah, there is some ability to, I mean, there's, in some cases, repeaters are installed, and the vendors talk about kind of bending around corners a bit. One thing that was interesting to me was that depending on the season, the signal can change because radio doesn't pass through water very well, and dense vegetation essentially is water in the air. So I've talked to utilities that in the fall, their AMI system has better communication than in the, than in the summer.
Reducing horns to the trees and all that.
Right. Right. I think that's a separate presentation. So the shorter antennas could be mounted on existing infrastructure like the railings on tanks where the taller antennas would need to be mounted on freestanding towers. The photo there was from is from a Southern California A M I system and there's a lot of non-A M I equipment on there, but that is an example of a freestanding tower that is being used for A M I.
Do you know which antenna is the A M I?
From what I've seen, I believe it's the one that's on the left side that is kind of that stake. Yeah, right, yeah. Not the round ones.
Well, most of those are cell phone.
But either way, a lot more noticeable than just a spike on a on a tank railing. So Sequo would be required for an antenna system as antennas can impact the view shed of neighboring property. So that view shed is a term I learned recently. We're all familiar with watersheds, important part of Marin Water, but a view shed is anything you can see from a particular vantage point. And there's some language in Sequo that these projects require an assessment of the visual impacts on the surroundings and how it alters or impacts views from different vantage points.
And for this, I think if you start looking at the antenna more seriously, it'd be good to talk with the radio authority here in Marin to hear their trials and tribulations they went through just to establish that. It was pretty lengthy. It'd probably be informational.
Right. And as you know, we have some pretty amazing view sheds in our service area, whether it's the bay or the, you know, the city or a bridge or Mount Tam. So towers would be noticeable.
Even trees are noticeable. I remember Lars Ulrich had a problem in Tiburon with a tree. I don't remember if it was him or the neighbor, but one of them had a problem and we had a tank in the middle of it, which is how we got involved. And there was something about a view and a deck and a tree and, you know, the view scape is an important issue.
Right, correct. So for cellular system, since it relies on these existing cell towers, it would not involve any installation or maintenance from Marin Water and all work would be done at each meter location and would be exempt from Sequo. So putting these side by side, we're still open to, we're not eliminating, you know, antenna as a solution, but it's important to be aware of these considerations. So with antenna system, seek was required, cellular would be exempt. Feasibility would be challenging with antennas in close proximity to neighborhoods or residential properties especially. Capital cost and operating, there's a slide later on that gets a little bit more into the details of cost, but antenna has a higher upfront cost due to the installation of these antennas. But over the lifecycle of the system, cellular is higher due to the cellular fees. So there's kind of a tipping point throughout the life of the project that that shift.
So what we're involved peripherally on an issue in Mill Valley, a good part of the community doesn't have cell access. And this has been going on years and years and there's email chains with every politician in the state and beyond. And still they're stuck because where do you site a tower? And there's opposition for every tower. So as we're looking at this and thinking about this, the approach, were we to go with towers, would probably have to be, the first project would be tower installation. And 10 years later, and I'm just picking a timeframe. But it does seem in our community and the size and locations of towers that that could be a big drag on the project and actually question, could you see it through? So as Craig noted, cells from a lifecycle are a bit more expensive, but currently we're thinking that's probably given the nature of our community and the importance of views and the challenges citing towers where we may end up landing.
I know the sleepy hollow neighborhood in San Onofre, similar issue, no cell service, lot of concerns as AT&amp;T that no longer wants to support the, you know, their hard connections and, you know.
No one volunteering to put a tower in their backyard, right? It's really a challenge.
Yeah, well, where I live, we don't have cell. My cell goes out on the internet. I had my own cell tower for maybe 15 years. And more recently, they've eliminated that, but now I we go out on the internet. AT&amp;T attempted to put in, I own a house in Point Richmond. They bought a house in Point Richmond to put an antenna in to spray the Southern Tiburon Peninsula. And didn't go over so well. When they told the people what we were going to do, they actually bought a regular house and they were going to put this super antenna in it pointed at us to provide cellphone service in Southern Tiburon. And I mean, if I get a half a bar, that's a pretty good day. So, you know, but I'm surprised the A M I part seems to work fine. And I don't know if the carrier frequencies are are easier to transmit than voice. They probably are because it's less sophisticated, so.
Yeah, much smaller data packets with the A M I and there are endpoints with Verizon chips or AT&amp;T chips that will work better in certain places. And they are using, they're not using like the newest, you know, 5G, they're using LTE just for small data packets that do a pretty good job covering distance. Regardless of what we end up with cellular or or antenna, there's going to be gaps, there's going to be blind spots. And so we're looking at, you know, these technologies that could help fill in those gaps because the propagation studies are coming back at, you know, cellular is closer to 97% of coverage, which is pretty impressive knowing our service area and antennas 98 and a half to 99%. So every percent is 620 meters that don't communicate with the system. So we're looking at, you know, 1 to 2,000 meters that are going to need a different method.
And can't you just have them transmit to another meter down the road?
There's very few that, actually one that I know of that does any sort of daisy chaining. Otherwise, they're all, they all need to get to to a cell tower or to an antenna or to a repeater. But no, yeah, not hopping from meter to meter. So one solution is Amazon Sidewalk with the Subeca registers, which we're piloting just over 100 of those and getting great results in some pretty challenging areas topography wise. And then drive-by radio, that's been around for decades, but that's a lot more efficient than manually reading. So I'm just talking in terms of the meters that don't communicate with our our future main A M I system.
We have those now, right, on Paradise?
There are some on Paradise, Contempo.
Contempo, yeah.
Yeah, have some. There's less than 1,000 total, but those just send a billing read and we'd be interested in getting some granular data through the drive-by that even though it wouldn't be as as recent as, you know, the 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 main system, you could still backfill some granular data through the drive-by read. And Subeca also provides the granular data. And then future technologies include satellite, a couple of vendors have satellite on their roadmap, but that would wouldn't align with our project timeline, but could be, you know, for a future project or maybe some transition.
It was fascinating to me, as you may be aware, I was in Southern Africa at the end of February and March, beginning of March. And in complete rural locations, I mean villages out in the middle of the African plains, full internet from Starlink. And there's a French company that competes with Tesla. But it was amazing. I mean, much better internet than we get, higher speed everywhere. I don't think we went to any place that didn't have internet, even, like I say, out in the middle of nowhere. They don't even have electricity. They have solar to get the electricity, but they don't have inbound electricity and they still had internet.
Well, I think, yeah, satellite's promising for A M I down the road. We touched on this during the intro. So there's a couple of things here in analog versus digital. So most A M I systems, there's this assumption that the digital meter paired with some sort of communication device gets you the A M I system, but there's a lot of batteries involved. And a lot of warranties are claiming a 20-year battery life. So imagine if you have a meter with a 20-year battery in it and it takes four years, say, to deploy A M I district wide. Once the system's fully installed, those year one meters are already four years old. So fast forward 15, 16 years and the analogy we're using is a cliff, that there's this cliff of, you know, 15,000 meters that are all going to die in the same year. And an electronic meter with a dead battery, not only does the A M I work, but you can't even get a billing read. It's just a blank screen. It's a paperweight. So I'm specifically talking here about our small meters, 5/8, 3/4, 1 inch, which make up 95% of our meters. There is some analog versions that still have a wired output that can get you the granular A M I data. They can get you down to a hundredth of a cubic foot in measuring water, but there is no internal battery. So they could go past that 20-year mark and that would just allow for some flexibility in the replacement cycle. As far as the no moving parts meter, those are only going to be digital. And there's also electromagnetic, which is a different version of no moving parts. But in talking to some other utilities and consultants, it seems like that's favored for inch and a half and larger for meters that have much higher flows and makes a little less sense on the small meters because there is a price jump when you go to the non-moving parts meter. And the the debate is throughout the life of the meter, do you ever get that back through maintaining that, you know, goal of 100% accuracy? We know the mechanical meters are going to degrade throughout their life. Some free water is going to slip through them. But do you ever get that price jump back? And the thought is for a lot of the meters, you don't. You're paying the premium on, say, all of them, but most of them, you, you know, you never got that difference back. So we're, the RFP will request pricing for for multiple scenarios so we can evaluate that.
It was interesting. I was flying into Toronto for the A W W A meeting a couple of years ago and my guy sitting across from me was a battery company, which I was a little surprised that they were going to A W W A because of exactly this issue. The the batteries, it's becoming a real business for them to supply batteries to the water industry. So it's kind of interesting, a little different than you normally think of in the water.
Yeah, yeah, a big part of it's batteries. Some additional considerations here, there's a lot here. I won't go through all of them. But the one would be the IT integration. No matter what we end up with, we're going to have SAP billing. We're going to have a third-party customer portal. We're going to have a district-facing portal, a meter data management system, a lot of different software platforms that all need to communicate.
Does the unit report its battery condition?
They will. So some have a low battery, usually around six months before they fail. But I've learned that several, when they send that low battery alarm, it's based on a countdown clock. It's actually, there's no connection to the the battery strength that's saying at 19 and a half years, turn on the low battery icon. Others actually have a living connection to that battery because you figure environmental conditions. Some batteries are going to last longer than others. But yeah, they all can issue a low battery alert towards the end of their battery life. So, yeah.
So Craig, if we did go with the battery, the digital option, then we may have to just set up like a replacement cycle, right? A staggered replacement cycle, just, you know, after 12 years, you know, every meter hits a certain end lifetime and it gets replaced.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to squeeze total life out of the system, you'd be doing another major A M I project 16 years later. Otherwise, you're going to be replacing meters before the end of their.
Before their end of life, right.
There's also the idea of the time of installation, is it a three-year or you stretch it out to a six-year that spreads that cliff, so to speak.
Yeah, that's an interesting concept. We currently do that though, huh? We replace meters on time.
Yeah, on it, we're kind of a roughly 20-year, 20-year replacement cycle, yeah. So the RFP process, like Paul mentioned, we want it to be competitive. We want to have several viable proposals come in. So any decisions on equipment or installation will be, you know, as a part of the RFP review process to maximize competitive bidding. The RFP will support the various approaches we talked about, like the turnkey, traditional district installed. And those proposals will be reviewed by the A M I project team and executive review team. And then we'll come to the board later this year for a workshop to discuss the results of the RFP evaluations.
Do you think you can get it down to A or B? Or is it going to be A, B, C, D, E?
I mean, hopefully we get it down to A.
Well, I understand that. That's the ultimate, but is it going to be turnkey or not?
Oh, oh, I see. Oh, between the the installation.
How do you make the decision? Yeah, you know, what's the metric that is just cost?
Cost will be a factor and then quality control has come up about, you know, how close we are to the action of installation, which having your own staff is the closest and then having turnkey would be you're kind of twice removed from it. But we're also looking at anything three inch and larger we do in-house anyway, because those get pretty complicated and we already have, you know, well-qualified large meter technicians that handle repair and replacement of large meters. But yeah, if it's a turnkey, it's going to be a turnkey and or, yeah, it'd be one of those three, but.
So a number of, as we've talked about, kind of variables in the decision-making, but the three we intentionally highlighted today are maybe the most significant, you know, the approach for installation, turnkey or a different model, the cell versus tower and digital versus analog. So, yeah, the idea, as Craig noted, is an RFP that gives the full suite of approaches. But yeah, it's going to be quite a process, not just developing the RFP, but sitting down, understanding the proposals and the best approach to go. So, yeah, it it's, we noted a workshop and that's what we're thinking it'll be a pretty extended, maybe multiple discussions with the board.
Not so sure it's really a workshop as much as a forum to present the information. I don't see too much input coming back from our side or from the public perhaps, but.
There is one one issue, though, maybe the public might be interested in, which is the granularity of the type of information that they receive. So I have both the district installed, I'm guessing it's a census A M I system.
It would be the, it might be a census meter, but it would be the Badger cell.
Badger, badger, sorry. Yes. And then I have a Flume. And the Flume gives more frequent readouts on, you know. I don't, you know, once you, I think as an end user, as once you understand the patterns, I, you know, at least I know for us, we're less likely to check because we know what the patterns are. We look at the, you know, end of the day result. We're not so concerned anymore with what happens on a hourly basis. But if there is, you know, if there are differences between the different options with respect to the frequency of information that they supply to end users, that may be a consideration.
Right, definitely.
And we haven't yet talked about in detail and at some point, of course, we will. These systems typically have some X percent of customers that are concerned about the additional
opt-out.
EMF and what an opt-out would look like and how to think about that. So that that'll be another aspect as we get deeper into this, we'll be talking about.
So a slide here on cost, keep in mind, these are estimated budgetary numbers, pre-competitive bids. There's a lot of ranges here on the board, but I broke it down into the main categories, turnkey versus traditional slash in-house or district installed and then subcategories of antenna and cellular. And just quickly going row by row, the equipment software tends to be higher with an antenna system because you have this network of antennas to be installed. And then naturally lower on cellular.
And then how do the antennas talk? They transmit back microwave to central location or?
A lot of them actually use.
The wire.
Or use a cellular endpoint at the antenna. So they're using the.
They jump to that.
Right. So they collect the reads through their own megahertz and then they transmit to the cloud with a with a cellular endpoint. So instead of having, you know, 60,000 cellular endpoints, you'd have 20 or 30. And then contingency and tax is going to be in that three to $4 million range across the categories. Installation is going to be higher under turnkey because you're paying for that kind of package deal. So that capital cost row sums up the above items and you can see that cellular starts out at a lower capital cost range and then that bottom line, the 18-year lifecycle cost does switch back to antenna that, because that's essentially lifecycle is the upfront capital cost and 18 years of maintaining the system. And that includes the customer portal and SAP integration and SAP, you know, billing automation. So there's a lot of software, more than just the equipment in the ground.
What interest rate on the present value?
We used a discount rate of 2% for the lifecycle, so we assumed 4 or 5% on the interest.
Craig, the capital cost that includes the cellular connection. Craig, the capital cost, that includes the cellular connection fees?
The capital cost includes, usually you're buying one year. For you can buy as much as you want, but you, that first year, you're locking in with with the cellular system. And that's why there's a decent jump in the lifecycle cost because you're paying the cellular fees over the life of the system.
The capital cost does not include.
Okay. And so where's that captured, the actual cellular cost then?
In the lifecycle cost.
Between the capital, the two bottom lines, it goes up the lifecycle.
Okay, understood.
Thank you. Yeah. So a much smaller jump from antenna to lifecycle versus cellular lifecycle.
Carrier is pretty cheap, though, as I recall. Every, every cell phone is transmitting on two different frequencies all the time. It's one telling it where it is. It's talking, that's the carrier frequency. That's the one that these guys use. It's not really, it's not the normal cell phone. So the cost of that guy is kind of like a buried cost in the, in the phones to begin with.
Right. So, yeah, that's their, they're passing that on to us and then probably then some. So the last slide here, next steps. We're going to complete reviewing the approaches to implementation, which is happening parallel to finalizing the RFP. And then the RFP will go out and as I mentioned, we'd be returning back to the board with the results of the evaluations of the RFP proposals. And that's all I have.
Cool. Very nice job. Thank you. Question?
Yeah, thank you for the update and also for the attention to details. We meet, we start identifying these major milestones from which to make decisions on. I still want to keep in the forefront, the cost of this project to make sure that it doesn't get much more expensive than we originally looked at a year and a half ago for that. Or if there is a reason why, because we really looked at this as, it's still without the how much water are you saving component? There's still a little bit of, we think we, we expect, but not anything, you know, for certain or concrete. So please continue to update on the price, especially as compared to what we first took a look at.
Yeah, the prices is, you know, these, as shown today, are are greater than was presented to the board in 2022 for sure. And they're even a little bit greater, you notice, than the last time we were here. We're hoping not to keep that going as a trend and we think we've got the prices kind of at the, at the ceiling at the moment, at least with our current understanding of what the system is. And Craig's been using budgetary pricing from the vendors to kind of build these cost estimates from the ground up. And the big difference between 2022 and the numbers that you see today are really in the installation costs. So that's the category that we're seeing the biggest change in. And that's based on a recent Bay Area installation of AMI.
Paul, Craig, thanks a lot for the, the good updates. You know, we justify the costs based on the potential benefits. I think as, as Matt says, though, our understanding of the benefits are still maybe a little bit, you know, qualitative. I wonder now with all the additional information on AMI installations and impacts, since, you know, we first start, you know, we really started, I know AMI is now, it sounds like goes back 10 years or more. But, but we had that, you know, big debate and I think in our discussion in 22. And then that really, you know, solidified the decision to move forward. I wonder, you know, if going back to see if we can get more quantitative estimates of the benefits, you know, in order to, you know, compare those to the costs would be, would be, would be an option, you know, are we able to do that? Is there more data that we could use on benefits?
We could take a look at that.
I just best guess, all in, when do you think, when do you see this being rolled out for our clients in totality?
Yeah, so the goal for full deployment is to start in July of 2027.
Once with the graph back up.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't see a.
There was a very busy.
Like 29 or something like that. There's a lot of info on the schedule.
The one with the bar.
Right.
Across the bottom.
Share. So it kind of stretches off into, to make it not so wide. But that doesn't actually show the end of it, but we're looking at, based on a district of our size, we'd be looking at roughly a four year deployment. The bulk of that in the first three years, but then that fourth year, there's going to be, you know, unforeseen issues or, you know, plumbing complexities or, you know, working with customers on why this one is being delayed. So, but essentially a four year project starting in July of 2027.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I thought Ronjev's comment was quite interesting, the one about the Flume versus the AMI. That, and I agree with you completely, the, the need drops off. It's nice to have the information available, but the need drops off. The only time we check ours routinely is when I'm getting ready to make some kind of a statement about what our water use is per capita in my house. And so your, your observations are exactly right, that the, the benefit is not, there's a long term benefit that always is there, but the short term benefit data wise is limited. Because you learn and then, you know, our patterns, we're pretty familiar with our patterns. So there may not be as much in the long run as there is in the short run. But, you know, one of my complaints has been routinely, not just here, but in the water industry, that expecting people to do some kind of conservation and then tell them every other month that what, what you did in January, oh, great, who cares what I did in January, right? I can't change that is kind of useless, you know? That, that's the other side of it. I mean, it works for the billing side, but it doesn't work for conserving. Because it's, the information is too old.
So there was also Director Kush's request to look at the kind of payback, the ROI. And it's an interesting, and as Paul noted, we'll think about that and try and bring something back. Because we are talking about a very large investment with it being considered a water supply effort with a focus obviously on water conservation. And we do want to hold that together to the extent, you know, it makes sense. And that's why we're doing this. So we'll, we'll think about that. The difficulty does come to some extent, thinking about the long term or short term benefit. And we'll have to think about that as we bring that back and talk to the board about it.
One of the vendors in the past in AMI had a refrigerator magnet, basically a display that showed you real time, your water usage. And that was a pretty slick approach, too. That way at least brings it to the forefront. As I used to read meters as a summer job and as familiar as I am, I'm not going to go out and read the meter. Okay, that's just not going to happen. And expecting somebody less interested than in water than me, it's definitely not going to happen. So, you know, it, this is the only way to get the information to them is the AMI. And ROI, I don't know, again, what the metrics would be. Yeah, it's complicated. Like, do you, you know, maybe if it, if it totaled dollars on the refrigerator magnet, maybe that might, might get people's attention, you know, like, whoa, we're a little high this month. I, I think I would find that particular option useful for PG&E. You know, to have that ability to know where you are in the cycle. I mean, there's at least 30 day cycles, so you have some more idea. But they don't really bend over backwards to provide the information to the people, from what I can see.
Yes, some of the customer portals, in addition to automated leak alerts, because, yeah, like you said, as time goes on, you're going to, you're going to check less frequently. But if you get pinged that there's an alert, then you're more likely to investigate. And then others also have dollar amount thresholds. So our, our billing system, our tiers, service charge, everything could be built into it. And you could say, hey, let me know if my bill is going to exceed $200 if it's usually 150. And then you kind of mid billing period, you could get a ping that you're, that you're projected to exceed a certain dollar amount.
You're now going to tier three.
Yeah. And of course, that's software, you know? That, that is a whole nother side of this thing is what you actually do with the information.
Right, sure.
Okay, cool. Public comment?
Yes, we have two. Eric and then Phil.
So this, this Eric Graves, I have three comments. One is, actually, I like my Flume.
You can keep it.
Well, actually, you don't get to keep it if you go to ultrasonic, but that's, that's just, but a point that you've not appreciated. There's two classes of information that you get from a Flume. One is this information that this is my profile of use. I looked at it last week. Why am I looking at it this week? And then the other is curiosity that I discovered or found out 50% of, or the second most expensive insurance claim in California is a water leak. And so there, my insurance company offers a discount if I have a system that monitors it in real time, like the fire people. There's no one in Marin County who offers that service. So I think trying to keep in your mind this issue about how to tell a customer that they have a problem is a valuable thing. So that's number one. Number two is, we don't have a backflow converter on our water system. And I understand that if I were to get a new water meter, you would want me to have one of those. And so I think that would be best if it's a package and that you install as a package, if that's possible.
Where do you live?
Just up and up.
Roughly.
Up by the woodland market, that area.
Okay, okay. I, I don't think there's anything about a backflow device. We're not aware of that.
So, well, that was my understanding, that if I actually asked for a new meter, that I was going to have to get a backflow device. Anyway, doesn't matter.
I can't envision where I live. I live in the water. So we have backflow devices. But I, it's only if there's a potential for a contamination.
Well, that would be very good. If I don't have to do it and have somebody look at it once a year, that would be fantastic. So that's one thing. Okay. And the third thing is you have talked about two different methods of signal transmission. One is cells and the other is an independent network. The sleepy hollow people, they do have Wi-Fi in their houses, don't they? So my Flume uses Wi-Fi. So I, I think, I don't know whether anybody is talking about a Wi-Fi connection. But in fact, I'm a little concerned that the communication technology that you're talking about is being built on a moving target. And that what we're expecting to see is that everybody's Wi-Fi gets actually quite a bit better because they want to watch better movies or worse movies. And so with that antenna system, you're locked. The cell system is a bit better, but some sort of arrangement. I had a Pento node for my Wi-Fi for a while. Verizon's used to sell it.
Thanks, Mr. Graves.
So look at Wi-Fi, see.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks for the presentation. FYI, this presentation wasn't on the website as of a half hour ago. So it'd be nice to have that posted. I can, I understand the benefits of AMI, the two that pop out for me is you can get rid of meter readers, I think. And then you can do good leak detection with it. What I'm not clear on is what, what the informational value is. For example, we were in the finance committee meeting last week and we were talking about why is our water volume up by 4% this year and our sales are down by 4%. And we talked about, could we look at tiered pricing and see if that might explain the difference? And we were told, well, we, we don't, we don't have tiered pricing. We'll have it in a few months at the end of the year. So that's data that we have right now that we could actually be using, but we're not using it. So I was going to suggest that as part of the RFP, we ask the vendors to have an element that talks about how they can help us use the data that we can get. And if it's, if it's for conservation, which, which is my interest, I'd love to see it used that way. What could it help us get? What can we understand? And I'm talking about not only what the user can do, but what the district can do with that data. We're going to now have, you know, a customer gets six data points a year when you read the bill. They now could have access to maybe 24 data points a day times 60,000 customers. I'm thinking a half a billion data points are going to come in as a result of this annually. So what can we use with, what can we do with that? And could we get the people who respond to the RFP to give us an element that says, here are other people using the data? We'll come in, in bed with you for 30 days or 90 days and help you, you know, find out what to do with that data. So that would be one suggestion. And I think that's it. Oh, and the other thing would be to begin that process, to start using the, the 5,000, you know, AMI meters that we have right now. I've seen, I think, one presentation on Flume, 50 Flume users that had some good information. What do we know right now from the, the automated meters that we have that we could put to use? Thanks.
There are no further speakers.
Cool. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Future meeting?
Yes, our next planning committee meeting is on June 24.
Hopefully that's going to be kind of the end of the Tuesdays.
No, there.
Because we moved it to Thursday and we were jabbling, that's what I remember. Did we send it on Tuesday?
Yes, we scheduled it for Tuesday.
I thought it was Tuesday unless we needed to adjust it around something on conflict.
According to the vote that the board voted on, it was on the fourth Tuesdays of the month.
Okay, I don't recall that, but.
Okay, I, do you want me to send you the video? I can.
No. I believe you. Okay. Thanks. Okay, so next month, Tuesday, the 24th.
Yes.
Thanks.